Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, December fifteenth, 2016. Please rise as Councilmember Judy Morales leads us in the invocation this evening, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by LULAC Council 22305.
Join me, please. Almighty and gracious Father, we come to you today with humble hearts to thank you for all your blessings, to thank you for your love, and for your Son, Jesus. We ask you, Father, for strength and wisdom to make the right decisions that will benefit our community. Let us know when to speak and when to keep silent, to know when to act and when to refrain. Let us have an open mind in our conversation and when to make decisions that will bless our community and please you. Father, we ask blessings on all our citizens and leaders in our community, our council persons, our military, police, and public servants, law enforcement. Keep them safe, Father. And we ask, during this special season of Christmas, that we be reminded of your gift of your Son to the world, and that your lasting love will last in the hearts of all men and women. We ask this in your precious Son's Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The LULAC Council, if y'all want to come down here, and y'all are going to be up and down here several times tonight, but this kind of makes it more official.
Come on, I'll let you.
Yeah, seriously. Yeah, come right over here. It's...
Just a pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Now is the opportunity for public comments. Anyone who wishes to address the council on any matter may do so by signing up prior to this meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken. Mr. Michael Steinheimer?
Mr. [inaudible].
Oh, wonderful. And Mr. J.D. Zepner?
Hello, my name's James Dean Zepner. Live at 402 South 26th Street in Temple. First of all, I would like to say, get 'em cats. I hope the Temple Wildcats will bring home the championship, because if they don't, they're going to be bringing home some cold weather. So I'd like to say, congratulate them for making them to the state finals. And second, I'd like to say, I was looking at, going through this sheet, I was going over item P, and that's considering adoption resolution authorizing a second amendment to service agreement between the City of Temple Valconia Resources Incorporated for single-stream recyclable material processing and marketing. Is that going to be the same recycling that we'd be doing now, or is that going to change a little bit? That was one of my questions. Because last week, our last meeting I was here, I said something about cleaning up these duplexes and having, when the judge ordered them out, having a dumpster there. So laudative properties and stuff that them people clean out of those folks' house could be recyclable, and the homeless people in our area could be using them instead of going to our dump grounds. Now, there's a lot more things I have to say, but first of all, I'd like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Years to all. If I don't get in trouble for saying Merry Christmas nowadays, you know, the way times are. But thank y'all, council, entities, citizens. This last four years, I've been looking into things, and I'm going to tell you what, I have been seeing a lot of good improvements throughout the City of Temple. Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all, entities, and thanks to citizens for stepping in. Y'all have good Happy New Years.
Thanks, Mr. Zepner, and Merry Christmas to you as well.
Thank you, sir.
Now, we have special recognitions and some presentations. Item 3A, we have a presentation by Judge Burrows and Sharon Long, tax assessor-collector of the child safety funds collected in the amount of eighty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars, thirty-four cents, and a check for the hotel occupancy tax in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred four dollars, eight cents. Judge, Ms. Long?
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening, Merry Christmas to you. Back in, I guess it was 2001, is that right, Sharon? The Tax Transportation Code was amended to allow counties to impose a dollar fifty per vehicle child safety registration fee, and that we collect, and then we distribute to Temple the portion that matches up with your population. The year on this closes out on September the thirtieth, 2016, and this year's check is eighty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents. Now, since we began this, and Sharon was here at the beginning, and this will be her last presentation, because she retires here at the end of the year, so we want to thank her for her great work. My part of this is like nothing. Her part is doing all the work, you know, but the total amount that we have brought to the council has been one million, one hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and a penny on that. And as you notice, it'll be used for safety programs. I'm not sure exactly how y'all use it. Some turn it over to the school system, some put it in crossing guards, some use for child abuse prevention, intervention in drug alcohol abuse prevention, very broad guidelines on that. The other amount, and I'll let Sharon speak to that, the other amount is on the hotel occupancy tax, and out of you on your agenda later is when you approve the interlocal agreement with Bell County on that. And so, once you do that, then I will bring you that check for sixty-nine thousand, two hundred four dollars and eight cents. That check is made out, so I'm pleased not to either bring or promise to bring, one hundred fifty, one thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents on that. And so Sharon, would I say some party words here to our friends on the council?
Yes, I'm honored to bring you this check tonight, and yes, I was there when we began collecting it, and I think I've been here every since, every year, to give the, present you with the check. I couldn't do it without my staff. They're the ones that meet the public face-to-face. Our office is the face of the county, as you well know. I think, you know, at some time or another, everyone needs to come get their vehicle registered, so hopefully, I know we've moved our office out of Temple temporarily while we remodeled the office. We're not going to get that moved back to Temple until after I'm gone. Just got that scheduled today for January the eleventh, for all the equipment and everything to move back over here, so it's a citizens that Temple won't have to drive to Belton anymore to get their registrations and title work done. So it's been an honor working with each and every one of you, and I've enjoyed every second that I've been in office. Could've missed a lot of it, but I'm really excited to start my new adventures. So, thank y'all and Merry Christmas.
Sharon, if I could just say that you have always operated such good offices, at least the ones that I visit in Temple and Belton, everybody is friendly and always eager to help, and it just dawned on me that I've written my last check to Sharon Long, tax assessor-collector, and anyway, we'll miss you greatly, but you've done such a wonderful job.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the next name a little bit, be a little bit harder to spell.
Hopefully, they'll still have a stamp.
She has the check, it's a third-party drywall contractor check we've endorsed over to you, and we know it's good.
Out of state, of course.
Out of state, out of state. Could you hold it for your...
We got led coming to bring you the check.
Well, and he wouldn't even postdate the other one, so that's the, you know, that's the problem.
I'm concerned why you had the chief so close to me here. That doesn't... I don't know what that means.
I think we all know the reason for that. Actually, if you'll give it to her, because I don't actually have any check privileges. But thank you.
Yeah, we know.
Yeah, absolutely. Best of luck. Thank you, Judge. All right. If I could ask the folks from LULAC that we just had come up a few minutes ago, we're going to recognize the Temple College Young Adult LULAC Council 22305 for being awarded the Texas and National LULAC Council of the Year, and then we're going to recognize Eva Garcia of the LULAC Council 4971 as the Temple College Young Adult Council 22305 Advisor of the Year. That's exciting. Yeah, y'all come over here. It's like y'all are worried to be close to me after the pledge and stuff. If I'm going to read a proclamation to you, and Judy, then I'll, y'all have so many achievements that it's going to take me a while to get through them, but they're all so important. The LULAC Council 22305 has proven to be committed to service above self, and leadership as this council is exemplary, not only as a LULAC Young Adult Council, but also as a leadership organization within Temple College, the Temple community, and the state of Texas. Whereas this council hosted the first-ever Temple College LULAC Student Appreciation Banquet, in which the council recognized nineteen students. Between the junior high, high school, and college level, the council raised over two thousand dollars for scholarships and council trips. Whereas this council hosted civic engagement seminars with city leaders, have provided input to improve college student life experiences, and have participated in many community, local, and state programs, as well as funding activities. Whereas this year, at the Texas LULAC National and State Convention, the council received the 2016 LULAC Young Adult Council of the Year Award, its advisor received the 2016 Advisor of the Year Award, and the council's president received the Texas LULAC Emerging Latino Scholarship Award. Whereas this council has proven to be exceptional and committed to exemplary service, and most importantly, very inspirational. And whereas the City of Temple is pleased to acknowledge the distinguished award of the LULAC Council 22305, and wish them luck as the 2016 Texas and National Council of the Year Award winners. Now therefore, I, Daniel A. Dunn, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby recognize the LULAC Council 22305 for the wonderful work they do within the City of Temple, Temple College, and the state of Texas. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand and the seal of the City of Temple, Texas, this is the fifteenth day of December, 2016. Thank y'all. And I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to just read a couple more things, and then we'll hold the applause, because well, I think we could possibly be just like clapping all night for y'all. But just to some of the things, y'all have been vendors at the Fourth of July Festival here in Temple. Thank y'all for that. You participated in the Zero Week orientations to welcome new Temple College students. You've participated in meetings with not only folks from the city, as I mentioned, but with Temple College administrators to improve the overall experience and education that you get at Temple College. The administrators included the president of the college and two vice presidents of the college. You participated in the Latino Summit in Austin, which was hosted by the Texas Senate Hispanic Caucus, and you hosted three Temple College LULAC garage sales to raise money for the council. Did y'all get permits for those?
Yeah.
No, I'm really, I'm just, I'm just really kidding about that. But anyway, there are so many things to list that we are all so proud of you, and thank you for being involved at an early level in the community. And Councilmember Morales, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Just that I too am very proud. I know that the community is very proud of you as leaders of our community in the future, and want to ask you that you just continue to do that, to be the role models for so many young people who feel like they can't do it, but you're showing that it can be done. So just keep up the good work, and thank you.
I'm going to, before y'all sit down, I'm going to ask that you go through the line and just introduce yourselves.
Hello, I'm Melissa Jones.
Yeah, it's on.
Vice President of Temple College LULAC.
Name is Thomas Torres, and I'm a member of the Temple College Young Adult LULAC.
Hi, my name is Karina Mendoza, and I'm this year's Temple College LULAC Council President.
My name is Benito Costilla. I am the past president of this council, and I'm a biotechnology major at Temple College.
Hello, my name is Maria Perez. I'm a member of the LULAC Council.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Martinez, and I am also a member of the LULAC Council.
Hi, my name is Zaver Yashrov, and I'm the past vice president of the council, and I'm studying biotechnology at Texas A&amp;M Central Texas.
My name is Kristen Hutchins, and I'm part of the council also.
My name is Eva Garcia, and I am the advisor for the Temple College Young Adult LULAC, and also the member of the 4971 Council. And I want to tell you, I'm so proud of these students who showed everyone all they can do, all the accomplishments, their dreams, they're looking and seeking, they're going to get there, and they're going to turn around and pass the torch to the ones behind us. Thank you so much for everything. Thank you, councilmen, thank you, Judy, thank you, John the ground, all of you. Thank you for supporting us so much.
And congratulations, Ms. Garcia, and I will hand you...
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll hand this to you. Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thanks. You bet. Oh, absolutely.
Thank you for your job.
Very nice to you.
Thank you. Good job.
Very nice to you. Thank you very much. Very nice to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good decision.
I feel like we're playing, like we just played a ballgame, and it's like, it's a good game, all right.
Right.
Item four is a public hearing to receive a municipal service plan and conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the possible annexation of sixty point three-three acres of land, Reading Roberts Survey, Abstract 692, Bell County, Texas, embracing a portion of a culled eighty-six point nine-one acre tract conveyed as tract four to Roy Scaff as the independent executor of the estate of the Leonard App in document number 2016-0009203, Official Public Records of Real Property, Bell County, Texas. Mr. Chandler, did I get all the zeros correct?
I believe you did.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a reminder that this is the first of two public hearings to receive the municipal service plan, and tomorrow morning at 8:30 is the second. And as was mentioned in the description, this is for sixty point three-three acres that you can see here, just south of FM 93, and just to the east of the Valley Ranch subdivision. And so you can see there are twenty-six point five-eight acres as part of this tract that are already within the city limits. And just a note that the applicant has requested a planned development district, single-family one zoning designation as well, which will be coming forward at a later date. And just to quickly just go over the annexation schedule with you, you may recall that you all approved by resolution a petition for the voluntary annexation for this proposed single-family development back on November seventeenth. We, in the Planning Department, developed a municipal services plan since then, and have distributed it all departments, and received feedback, and there are no issues. The first reading for the ordinance will be on January nineteenth, and then the second reading will be on February second. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chandler, council only questions. Right. This item is scheduled for a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right. There's no one wishing to speak at this time. I will leave the public hearing open, and as it was mentioned, we will have the continuation of the public hearing tomorrow, December sixteenth, at 8:30 a.m., and so y'all are welcome to come back if you'd like to for that. Item five is the consent agenda. All items listed under this section, the consent agenda, are considered to be routine by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, an item may be removed from the consent agenda and can be considered separately. And we have a note to table, or item five T, but I'll entertain a motion on item five A through five E, with the exception of item five T.
Take your motion to approval.
Motion?
Second.
Motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Phil Kington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. Then item five T, consider adopting a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Kimley Horn of Austin, in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars for engineering services required for the traffic signal design at the intersections of North Kegley Road, at Airport Road, and West Adams Avenue at Greenview Drive, and that was a request to table, and I would entertain a motion on item five T.
Motion to table item five T.
Second.
A motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Phil Kington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item six, a resolution, consider adopting a resolution settling drainage fees for residential and commercial drainage services effective January first, 2016. Mr. Bond.
Twenty seventeen. Forgive me. Shown at the bottom bar on this slide is the current fee structure for the drainage rate, and that was last updated in 2011. So currently, there are components of that drainage rate that are dedicated to maintenance, TCQ stormwater compliance, and mowing. And the maintenance activities covered by the drainage fund are really, were on the order of small-scale repairs and cleaning, and it doesn't really cover large-scale reconstruction or installation of new infrastructure. The proposed fee structure is shown all the way to the left, and so there are tiered rates for the different-sized commercial structures, and also a flat fee for the residential rate that would only be assessed for customers that use over two thousand gallons in a monthly billing cycle. And as you can, you can see the proposed commercial rates somewhat flatten out the rate that the customers would be paying on a per-square-foot basis. That's all we have. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Council, any questions?
We discussed this in workshop a few weeks back, and even with the proposed fees that are being requested, they're still very competitive with other communities, both our peer communities and others in the area. I don't think we're stepping out on them too far on that.
Also, it'll help us deal with a lot of drainage issues, as we have seen over the past couple of years with the downpours that we've had. So thank y'all for your work on this. Anything else? All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion on item six.
I'm going to approve item six as presented.
Second.
Motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Phil Kington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item seven, consider adopting a resolution pursuant to Chapter 2206, Government Code 2206.053, finding that a zero point two-eight-two acre permanent easement and a zero point six-six-five acre temporary construction easement on a portion of the property located at the intersection of Taylor's Valley Road and Rockwell Lane near FM 93 Belton is necessary for the construction of the Leon River wastewater line and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn the property. Mr. Mears.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to bring to y'all a presentation asking for y'all to authorize eminent domain authority on one particular piece, Leon River trunk sewer. On today's agenda, we're asking you to adopt a resolution pursuant to Chapter 2206, Government Code 2206.053, finding that a zero point two-eight-two acre permanent easement and a zero point six-six-five acre temporary construction easement on a portion of the property located at the intersection of Taylor's Valley Road and Rockwell Lane near FM 93 in Belton is necessary for the construction of the Leon River wastewater line and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn this property. I will be going over the project overview, the necessity of this particular property for the project, and the request to use eminent domain for the property, and the condemnation This is a overview map of the Leon River trunk sewer project. The parcels that are circled in purple are the ones that the city needed to acquire. The other parcels that are not circled were either determined to not be needed, or the city already had the necessary right-of-way. Just a little bit about the project. It's a new wastewater line in southwest Temple. It'll run roughly parallel to the Leon River, and it's necessary to provide sewer service to the properties along the route, and seven easements from five landowners were needed to be acquired. We engaged Lone Star Right-of-Way Services to assist with the acquisition of the, I was supposed to say seven easements, I apologize. Appraisals were completed, offers were mailed to the owners. We were able to reach agreements for six easements, and council has previously approved acquisition of all of the easements, and tonight we're asking authorization to use eminent domain for one property. As you can see here, here's the map of the six easements that we have acquired, or either we have an agreement in writing, and the one circled in blue is the one that we are seeking eminent domain authorization on. Like I said earlier, this project is at the intersection of Taylor's Valley Road and Rockwell Lane near FM 93, and the pictures on here just kind of give you a better idea of where it's located in relation to the roads and the easement that's needed along the boundary of that property. We made an offer in June of 2016 for the permanent easement and temporary easement. We received a counteroffer from the landowner in September of 2016. We were not able to reach an agreement, therefore we sent a final offer on November twenty-eighth. The landowner had fourteen days to accept our final offer, and as of today, we have not reached an agreement. Therefore, it appears that eminent domain will be necessary to acquire this easement. Like I said, agreement with the owner is unlikely at this time, and in order to meet the construction timetable that's been presented to the public, staff is requesting authority to use eminent domain. Like I said, the final offer was presented on November twenty-eighteenth, or I'm sorry, November twenty-eighth, and they had fourteen days to accept. No response has been received, and so we will proceed to condemnation. This process can take up to six months, which is why staff is seeking to authorize this process ASAP. And just a little bit about the condemnation process. In order to get to the point where we can file the petition, there are some requirements that we have to meet. Just to refresh your memory, we have to make what's called a bona fide offer, and in doing so, we have to make that initial offer in writing to the landowner. They have a minimum of thirty days to accept that initial offer. We have to provide them any appraisals that the city has done or acquired for that piece of property within the last ten years. We're also required to get an appraisal for the right-of-way or easement that we're seeking, and provide that to the landowner as well. We have to then provide a final offer that is equal to or more than the appraised value, and they have fourteen days to accept that final written offer. And if they don't at that point, then we can proceed to file the petition for condemnation in county court at law. The judge will then appoint three special commissioners. Those special commissioners are disinterested landowners that are in the county where the property is located, so obviously that's Bell County in this case. The special commissioners will hold a hearing to determine the value of the property to be acquired, and will issue an award. Once it's done, the city can take possession of the land after we deposit the award with the court, because there is an appeal process associated with that, and they have, either side can actually appeal, they have twenty days to do so after the special commissioners have filed their findings with the judge. However, like I said, even while that appeal process is pending, we can still take possession of the land and proceed. If it is appealed, then it proceeds in the county court at law as a traditional civil trial, and they are entitled to a jury. Again, here's just an overview map, just to remind you of the one property that we are seeking eminent domain on. Any questions?
Council only questions.
As a reminder, you do have the special motion language for each of the easy items tonight. tonight.
I will entertain a motion on item seven.
I move that the City of Temple approve Resolution Number twenty-sixteen dash eighty-four-ninety-six dash R and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement on a portion of property located at the intersection of Taylor's Valley Road and Rockwell Lane near Farm Road ninety-three, and more particularly described as being a point-two-eight-two acre permanent easement and a point-five acre temporary construction easement situation in the OT Tyler survey, abstract twenty, Bell County, Texas, for the construction of the proposed Leon River wastewater line.
Motion.
Second.
A motion to the second, Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item eight, consider adopting a resolution pursuant to chapter twenty-two oh six of government code, section twenty-two oh six point zero-five-three, finding that two properties situated in the Baldwin Robertson survey, abstract seventeen, which are located along Prairie View Road and Temple, are necessary for the construction of the proposed expansion and realignment of Prairie View Road and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn the properties. Again, Mr. Mears.
Hopefully, this doesn't get too repetitive. This is for the Prairie View Road, phase two. Like I said, you read the motion, so I won't reread it for you. In this presentation, I will go over the project, again, the necessity of the properties for this project, and the request to use eminent domain for each of those properties in the condemnation process. As you can see, this is an overview map of Prairie View, phase one, ran from Hilliard Road to around North P Ridge Road, and that's completed. We're now working on acquiring the right-of-way for phase two, which will run from approximately North P Ridge Road, P Ridge Road, over to FM twenty-four eighty-three and realign that intersection of the road at three-seventeen. And then here's just some snapshots of Prairie View Road as it stands right now. The design initially required the acquisition of right-of-way from nineteen different properties. We engaged Lochner as the right-of-way consultant to assist with acquiring these right-of-ways. The appraisals were performed, we made offers, and relocation studies were completed. We were able to reach agreements for fifteen properties. Negotiations are ongoing for two properties. Council previously approved acquisition of fourteen properties, and one was approved tonight on the consent agenda. One property is to be dedicated with a plat, and two properties have been dropped from the scope. This evening, staff is seeking authorization to use eminent domain for two properties. As far as the necessity of the properties, this is an overview of all the parcels that have been needed for this project. The numbers in black indicate that we have either reached an agreement, or we do have possession of those properties. Those in orange, negotiations are ongoing, and the two in purple are the two properties that we are requesting eminent domain for. The first one referred to is Newman. It's located at ninety-two forty-four Prairie View Road. In April of two thousand sixteen, we made an offer for three-point-five-nine-two acres out of a five-point-zero-eight acre tract. This property does not require relocation. We were able to reach an agreement with the owners. Unfortunately, they have a pending bankruptcy case, so that sale has to be approved by the bankruptcy court. It's taken some time to communicate with the landowner's bankruptcy attorney, but finally Lochner was able to get them to file a motion in the bankruptcy court, and actually yesterday there was a hearing on this motion, and we got word from Lochner that the sale was approved. So hopefully, this ultimately, we'll be able to move this along without eminent domain, but we would prefer to go ahead and have it authorized just in the event something goes awry because of the nature of the bankruptcy suit. And the photos show you the overall tract of land, and then the survey kind of indicates the portion needed, and looking at the survey and the tract, we roughly need to, about right here, down to the road. And the second property is the Conlin property at eighty-eight ninety Prairie View Road. We made an offer in April of two thousand sixteen for point-three-seven-eight acres out of a three-point-seven-six-two acre tract. We were able to reach an agreement with the owner of record. However, it was discovered that the property may not have been properly conveyed after preceding owner's death. Initial offers were then sent out to the deceased heirs, and then a final offer was made in September. Agreements were made with some heirs, but others will not agree to the sale, so it appears that condemnation will be necessary at this time. And again, the photos, this is the tract of the Conlin property, and we just need a small portion, the point-three-seven-eight, that runs just right at the front here. The need for eminent domain, excuse me, because of the unusual legal issues associated with these properties, acquisition by agreement seems uncertain. Hopefully, the bankruptcy one will go smoothly now that we have that approval. In order to meet the construction deadline, we do go ahead and ask that you authorize eminent domain. The final offers had been presented, and they had their fourteen days to accept, and they did not, so we will go ahead and proceed. Like I said earlier, condemnation can take up to six months, which is why we're asking to initiate this process now. As I stated earlier, the petition will be filed in county court. The judge will appoint the three commissioners, and we'll have a hearing, and then take possession of the land once we deposit the award with the court. Again, here's an overview of the project with the two parcels that we're seeking eminent domain authority on. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions? I'll entertain a motion on item eight, and remember, there is specific language to use on that, and it's long.
I move that the City of Temple approve Resolution Number twenty-sixteen dash eighty-four-ninety-seven R and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire a fee simple titled to portions of two properties situated in the Baldwin Robertson survey, abstract seventeen, which are located along Prairie View Road in Temple, Texas, for the expansion of Prairie View Road. The descriptions of the two properties to be acquired are as follows, and the record vote shall apply to all units of property to be condemned. First, an approximately three-point-five-nine-two acre tract of land situated in the Baldwin Robertson survey, abstract number seventeen, Bell County, Texas, being a portion of a called five-point-o-eight acre tract of land conveyed to Kenneth D. Newman and Nargis F. Newman in volume thirty-seven fifty-eight, page forty-eight, official public records of real property, Bell County, Texas, with an address of ninety-two forty-four Prairie View, at the Dexter seventy-five. Approximately zero-point-three-seven-eight acre tract of land situated in the Baldwin Robertson survey, abstract number seventeen, Bell County, Texas, being a portion of a called four-point-one-four acre tract of land conveyed to Mary H. Conlin in document number two thousand thirteen dash zero-zero-zero four-five-two-one-seven, official public records of real property, Bell County, Texas, and described in volume sixteen fifty-eight, page four ninety-five, deed records of Bell County, Texas, with an address of eighty-eight ninety Prairie View Road, Temple, Texas, seven-six-five oh two.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item nine, consider adopting a resolution pursuant to chapter twenty-two oh six government code, twenty-two oh six point zero-five-three, finding that two properties situated in the SE Bill addition, and one property situated in JW Roach addition, all of which are located along South Sixth Street in Temple, Texas, seven-six-five oh one, are necessary for the construction of the proposed Santa Fe Market Trail and Martin Luther King Junior Fields Festival Grounds, and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn these properties. Mr. Mears.
Last time. I will point out that on the agenda today, we are actually asking for property, for three properties, and one of those, we've actually now do not need that authority on. And I'll go over the project overview and the necessity of the property for the project and our request to use eminent domain for that property. Just a summary of the project. The MLK Festival Grounds is a connection to the planned Santa Fe Plaza, and the city has already acquired thirty-four parcels within or adjacent to the proposed festival grounds prior to design commencement. The full build-out required an additional twenty parcels owned by seventeen different individuals, and five parcels were identified as alternate acquisitions. Twenty parcels were identified as priority acquisitions. Stateside Right-of-Way Services assisted with the acquisition of the twenty properties. Appraisals were completed, and offers were mailed to the owners. Agreements were reached for sixteen of them. Council previously approved acquisition of all properties, including use of eminent domain on four of those, and I'll go over the ones that eminent domain was authorized previously. Two properties were dropped from the scope, however, one's been added back to the project. So this evening, staff is seeking authorization to use eminent domain for one property. The necessity of the properties, here's an overview map to kind of go over. The parcels that are highlighted in purple have either been acquired, or we do have an agreement with those property owners. The property that is highlighted in green, which is number sixteen, that is one that we are continuing negotiations, and eminent domain was actually authorized for this one back in August. However, there was a change in ownership, and so we're negotiating right now with that new owner and do anticipate reaching agreement. Those highlighted in red are the ones where eminent domain will be necessary on parcel ten, and then part of parcel fifteen, eminent domain was authorized in August, and those will be proceeded, or we will proceed with eminent domain on those. The other one that council had approved eminent domain authority was for parcel eight. However, since that time, we've reached an agreement with that owner, so hopefully, we'll be able to finalize that. And then this one here in orange, we've been made aware that it'll go to a tax auction, most likely in the spring, and so we are hoping to acquire it at the tax office. And so this evening, the property we're actually seeking eminent domain authority is for the one, this alternate site down here, A two A and A two B. Just kind of going back to fifteen, that was the one that had the tax sale, that only a portion of it was actually sold at the tax sale, so we have an agreement with the owner that purchased the portion sold at the tax sale, who will sell it to the city, and then we'll seek eminent domain on the portion that was not sold at the tax sale. The property that we're seeking eminent domain authority on is KFA two A and two B, known as the Hodge Properties. They're both vacant lots. There's a photo of the two lots combined. An offer was sent in March of two thousand sixteen. Stateside made multiple attempts to meet with the owner and was just never able to get in contact with them, just refused to discuss anything with us. A final offer was sent on December eighth, and as of today, we've not received any response. So at this time, we don't anticipate a response, so we believe that condemnation will be necessary, and this property will be necessary for parking for this project. Like I said, agreement with the owner is unlikely, and so in order to meet the construction timetable, staff's requesting authority to use eminent domain. Like I said, the final offer was presented on December eighth, and the owner has fourteen days to accept. If we do not get a response, we will proceed to condemnation, and so since it can take up to six months, we're asking, seeking authority to initiate it as quickly as possible. Any questions?
Questions?
On this one, I apologize. I noticed at the end of the motion language, if you all could add, after seven-six-five oh one, for the construction of the MLK Junior Fields Festival Grounds. I had to mention the actual project. Oh, I don't think you can read my handwriting. It's bad. Okay.
If, thank you, Mr. Mears. There are no questions, I will entertain a motion on item nine.
I move that the City of Temple approve Resolution Number twenty-sixteen dash eighty-four-ninety-eight dash R and authorize the use of power, of the power of eminent domain to acquire a fee simple titled to two unimproved tracts of land, legally described as lot one and the north twenty feet of lot two and block one of SE Bill's addition, an addition to the City of Temple, Bell County, Texas, with an address of three oh one East Avenue D, Temple, Texas, seven-six-five oh one, for the construction of the Martin Luther King Junior Fields Festival Grounds.
We have a motion in a second, Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item ten, consider adopting a resolution authorizing a tax abatement agreement with MS Temple LLC, which will cover increases in the taxable value of real property for five-point-one-eight-four acre tract of land located in tax abatement reinvestment zone number thirty-four. Ms. Linderous.
On the consent agenda, you had second reading of an ordinance that created tax abatement reinvestment zone number thirty-four, which you just approved, and just as a reminder, that area is a little over five acres, located on Marlinwood Road between South Fifth and Lowe's Drive. We received an application from a company called MS Temple LLC for tax abatement on that property, for real property improvements to be constructed. MS Temple is requesting that the city abate taxes for fifty percent of their taxes over five years. The applicant anticipates an investment of approximately sixteen million dollars. I do want to qualify that a little bit. It's between eleven and twelve million in real property improvements. The rest is personal property, and obviously, the price for acquiring the tract, and then creating ninety jobs within the first three years of operation. It is a proposed senior housing facility, and the construction or the build-out will be about fifty thousand square feet. Fiscal impact using the city's current tax rate is approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars over the next five years, again, at fifty percent tax abatement. Of course, our tax abatement agreements include all the requirements of state law. I sent a draft of that agreement to the representatives for the company. They're in agreement with those terms. We do, are, we are required to provide notice to all the other tax entities at least seven days before we enter into the tax abatement agreement, so if approved tonight, we will move forward with that notice. And the proposed construction does meet our minimum standards for tax abatement that are set forth in our economic development policy, because the project has high visibility, image impact, and a significantly higher level of development quality, and should stimulate desired concentrations of employment and commercial activity in that area. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Linderous. Questions? There being no questions, I'll entertain a motion on item ten.
Motion to approve item ten. Second.
A motion to the second, Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item eleven, board appointment, consider adopting a resolution designating the chair of the tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one, Board of Directors for two thousand seventeen. Thomas Baird has been in that position and has requested to remain in that position, and if there are no other nominations, I will entertain a motion on item eleven.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion to the second, Madam Secretary.
Mayor Pro Tim Cloud.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
No. That being said, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and maybe, most importantly, in the next couple of days, go Wildcats. Absolutely. Everybody have a great time. And if...